Good morning. We're going to get started now. Running a little bit late. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to get started. We've established our quorum. So I would like to have our invocation this morning, and I'd like to recognize my good friend, a member of the mighty Fifth Councilmatic District, Bishop Lewis Nass of Faith Deliverance Outreach Ministry. He's here today as my guest, and I would ask all members and guests to please rise.
First of all, we'd like to thank the Council of Chambers, the President, for inviting us to pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus Christ, we thank you for the meeting of the minds to coming back together for the last meeting in this chamber this year. But we pray, Lord God, that you would invoke your presence in each and every member, from the least to the greatest, also their staff, tatchin' from all five points of their body, cover them in your blood, put them on your whole armor, bless them as they do your business for the people on which you have ordained them to be. And we pray, Lord God, that this not be the last time that we all come together. We ask that as we leave this place, we're certain not from your presence in fulfilling your business, that you be with us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Bishop. Council will be at ease. Thank you. Thank you so much, Bishop, for those inspiring words. Okay. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December 8, 2022, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December 8, 2022 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, December 8, 2022, stand approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and our journal is approved. And the next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council, and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: resolution authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included in the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the legislative matters stated by Councilman Squilla may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of the session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And our next order of business is communications. The clerk will please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2307 of the Home Road Charter, and today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills: Bill numbers 220913, 220915, 220916, 220917, 220918, 220919, 220921, 220942, 220944, 220945, 220946, 220948, 220949, and 220950. And I am pleased to advise you that on December 14, 2022, I signed the remaining bills which were passed by council at its session on December 1, 2022, except Bill Number 220776, which I am returning without my signature. And that on December 14, 2022, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on December 8, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes the messages from the mayor and communications, and our next order of business is introducing the bills and resolution. And, Mr. Decker, please read the title of the legislation that's being offered by our members today.
Councilman Phillips offers one resolution, a privileged resolution honoring Kiyasha Tyson and recognizing her for her tireless service to the people of Philadelphia and Pennsylvania.
Today's calendar?
Mr. President, Councilman Phillips would like to be recognized on this resolution.
I'm sorry. Say it again, Mr.?
Councilman Phillips would like to be recognized on this resolution.
Oh, sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a few comments about the leader of our Ninth District in more ways than one, Kiyasha Tyson. For the past seven years, Kiyasha Tyson has been an incredible person who has been an individual who has really from early morning all the way into late evening worked tirelessly for the neighbors of our Ninth District. And today, in the next couple of weeks, it will be her final time here at City Council. And not only that, Kiyasha Tyson has worked in state government as now City Council for Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Sherelle Parker, for the past 15 years. And what I can tell you about Kiyasha and everyone who, a lot of our council members and council staff members will tell you is that she's always on the phone, she's always responsive to neighbors, and most importantly, she has a heart full of goal and her kindness is zoos in more ways than one. I will say that I myself, in the few weeks that I've been here, have been tremendously helped by Kiyasha, and I also know that those who are on our team, our staff, the work that they do, it doesn't get done without people like her. And just for example, and I'll just, I'll end here. You know, Kiyasha was really responsible for major initiatives such as cleanup programs, the strengthening of our commercial corridors, as well as, you know, ensuring that our neighborhood had the best services when it came to resources. So I always say that, I always say that Kiyasha has been such a leader for our district because it really takes a team to make a difference in our community. But she has truly been, for the past 15 years in our area, specifically seven years on City Council, the person that our neighbors know and really, really enjoy. And I just want to say thank you for your service to Philadelphia and to this body. Thank you, Kiyasha.
Thank you for your service. Seems like it's a gotcha moment. Thank you. Awesome work. Thank you so much, Kiyasha. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Thomas offers a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week St. Joseph's Preparatory High School Football Team for their success in winning the PIA-6A title in Harrisburg.
Today's calendar?
Councilman Jones offers three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution, amending Resolution Number 200001A as amended, which provides rules for the government of the Council of the City of Philadelphia by establishing a new standing committee titled the Committee on Neighborhood Services.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Is that for this?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules of council so that we can consider this resolution on today's calendar.
Can I get a second? Second. It's been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to allow the reading of this resolution today's session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that shall be on today's final passage calendar.
And also on behalf of Council President Clark, a privileged resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation to hold public hearings to discuss the status of the city's recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic.
Today's calendar?
And on his own behalf, Councilman Jones offers a privileged resolution honoring the historic and trailblazing leaders of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives and the Philadelphia House delegation: Joanna McClinton, Jordan Harris, Morgan Seifus, Donido Burgos, and Malcolm Kenyatta.
Today's calendar?
Councilman Johnson offers one bill and three resolutions entitled in ordinance naming and designating the Chu Playground Basketball Courts located at 1800 Washington Avenue, the Rasul Butler Basketball Courts in honor of Point Breeze native Rasul Butler, who distinguished himself over a 14-year NBA career, most notably with the Miami Heat.
Next session's calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing Africa Town, a broad-based economic development initiative in southwest and west Philadelphia led by the African Cultural Alliance of North America.
Today's calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring City Year Philadelphia for its 25 years of service in Philadelphia.
Today's calendar?
And a non-privileged resolution urging the United States Congress to pass House Resolution 8105, the Good Jobs for Good Airports Act, to ensure fair wages and benefits for airport workers in Philadelphia and across the nation.
Today's calendar? Next week's calendar? Next session's calendar, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Lazada offers two resolutions: a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to 38418 Kensington Avenue, 3420 Kensington Avenue, and 3422 Kensington Avenue located in the Seventh Councilmatic District. Mr. President, the Councilwoman would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lazada.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution at today's council session.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to allow reading this day of this resolution. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar.
And a resolution. Philadelphia City Council calls on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to add Xylazine to the Controlled Substances List in Pennsylvania. Mr. President, the Councilwoman would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Councilwoman? Who is it for?
Councilwoman Lazada.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lazada.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution at today's council session.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all in favor. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar.
Councilwoman Gartier offers two bills and six resolutions entitled in ordinance, amending Chapter 7200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Preservation of Affordable Housing to modify certain requirements that must be met before a change in ownership, other disposition, or other change in property interest occurs with respect to certain affordable housing properties in Philadelphia.
For the committee?
And in ordinance, amending Chapter 7200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Preservation of Affordable Housing to provide for a city directory of affordable housing subsidies and their duration.
Was that a?
That was an ordinance, Mr. President.
For the committee?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to 1 through 49 Rudy Robinson Way located in the Third Councilmatic District.
Next week's, next session's calendar?
And a privileged resolution designating Wednesday, December 21, 2022, as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day in the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar?
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to conduct hearings regarding discrimination against households holding tenant-based vouchers, putting thousands of vulnerable Philadelphians at risk of homelessness and the effect of this discrimination on Philadelphia's affordable housing crisis.
Today's calendar?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the Third Councilmatic District.
Next session's calendar?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to various properties located in the Third Councilmatic District.
Next session's calendar?
And a privileged resolution honoring Samantha J. Williams Esquire, recognizing her service to the citizens of Philadelphia and wishing her well in her future endeavors.
This week's calendar?
Councilman O'Neill offers, on behalf of Council President Clark, a non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on retention and recruitment of municipal workers to analyze and recommend ways to modernize the city's hiring procedures, recommend strategies to retain current city workers, and recruit new workers by, to the greatest extent possible, hiring residents.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that will be on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gartier, and then Councilman. Because you were, you were on earlier.
I will let the majority leader go first.
You want to wait?
Yes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. It is with mixed emotions that we presented the resolution recognizing Samantha Williams Esquire and her departure from this body. There are certain people that walk into this building that work for us, and you realize this might be a floor. There are others that walk in this building and you know, this is probably the ceiling. It was clear from day one that this was only a floor for Samantha Williams Esquire. She has been an integral part for the last seven years of my office's legislative agenda. Things like... Geez, so many. So let's go with the Police Oversight Commission. And I say that because, as I think about it, she stood up to advocates, she stood up to people who were against it, she stood up to the city solicitor's office in a way that only she could have. She had a baby face but a determination that was set in stone. I think she gets it from her mother, not her father. But she gets it. And we will miss her tremendously in these halls. She's a fighter. You have to have two essential components to be successful as a legislative director. You have to have a head that knows what to do, but you have to have a heart to know why you're doing it. And she possesses both of those things. So join me in wishing her well.
All right. I've never heard you quiet like this before. Awesome. We're gonna miss you. But I know you're gonna be around. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gartier.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to say a few words on behalf of my sister, Samantha Williams. I am immensely proud of her accomplishments and everything that she has given to the City of Philadelphia to date, from her service in the District Attorney's Office, fighting for justice for victims, to all of the impact that she's had on criminal justice policy and on gun violence prevention here in City Council. You know, Samantha is my little sister, but there is nothing little about her and about how she moves through the world. And she has, you know, also been such a support to me in my first term in City Council. She's been an advisor to me. She's offered me moral support. And my sister is also my best friend. And I'm going to miss you sitting behind me in council and being able to look to you for reassurance and camaraderie. But I also have full confidence that you're going to be victorious in your next endeavors and that you are going to do even more to serve and benefit the people of Philadelphia. And I also want to acknowledge the presence of my parents, Leon and Judy Williams, as well as my brother-in-law, Sean Dwyer, who has, who have joined us today also to congratulate and honor Samantha, or Sam, as we call her. And so, we all love you, sis. And, you know, we're your biggest cheerleaders, not just today, but in everything, you know, that you're going to do moving forward. So congratulations and love you.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. Decker?
Councilman Squilla offers three resolutions on behalf of Council President Clark: a non-privileged resolution appointing Paul Badger to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a non-privileged resolution appointing Valeria Beers to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a resolution appointing Anna Boni to the Board of Directors of the Center City District.
For the committee?
Councilwoman Bass offers one bill and two resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance, Taxes, and Collections to incentivize affordable housing development by authorizing tax exemptions pursuant to the Affordable Housing Unit Tax Exemption Act.
For the committee?
And on her own behalf, Councilwoman Bass offers a privileged resolution recognizing the month of December as National Right of Business Plan Month in the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing the month of December as National Impair Driving Prevention Month in the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar?
Councilman O offers two resolutions: a privileged resolution recognizing, a privileged resolution proclaiming January 13, 2023 as Korean-American Day in Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Korean-Americans and their invaluable contributions to enhance the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy.
Today's calendar?
And a non-privileged resolution adopting the Philadelphia Music Industry Task Force Report and Recommendations issued by Council's Global Opportunities and Creative Innovative Economy Committee.
Next session's calendar?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Before we go into our next phase of our council session, just wanted to acknowledge two guests that I have here with me today. I have the coaches of the 2002 United Youth Football League, 12 U national champions. Recently, they were in Florida where they won their national championship. Unfortunately, the charter buses that they used, Council President, to go down to play in this very, very competitive national tournament with people from all across the country, left the young people there stranded. And the team had to stay down there three days and they just came back. But I didn't want to let them go without noticing and recognizing them for their hard work and their dedication in coaching our young people. Because oftentimes, we talk about the issue of gun violence, right? If we don't invest in our young people and get them involved in things of the positive, then obviously they'll get involved in things of the negative. And these two coaches have stepped up to the plate without pay to coach our young people. So I'm going to ask to stand is Coach Mack, who shamed Sally and his brother, Coach Shid, Sean Sally. I'm going to give them a round of applause as well. Also, Council President, if I can have just a little personal privilege, because they also hail from the Ninth Councilmatic District with the Councilman Anthony Phillips District. The two of us are going to make an activities fund grant contribution of $5,000 to the football team. We'd like for you to acknowledge him and say a few words, if that's okay, Council President.
Awesome. Council, Councilman Phillips?
Also, I want to thank Councilman Kenyatta Johnson for working closely with this football team that's in our area in northeast Philadelphia. And I simply want to say that I too, just like Councilman Thomas and a lot of other folks who have been championing young people and our other council members, we really believe that football teams, leadership organizations, they make the world of a difference in the lives of young people. And a lot of us wouldn't be here today without youth organizations in our lives. So I just want to say thank you to our coaches and whatever else we can do, not only from a monetary standpoint, but from a moral support standpoint, mentoring standpoint, we're here for you. So we love you. We appreciate y'all. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Philadelphia is a city of leaders and winners. And whether they're on or off the field or they're serving in our administration or working in City Council, there's a lot of talent in this town. And so I just really wanted to take a brief moment and recognize someone who has done an extraordinary job of working with us here in Philadelphia City Council who's getting ready to retire, and that is none other than Jane Baker from the Philadelphia Department of Public Health. Jane, are you here? I know you're here somewhere. You could stay out. Somebody's pointing her out. Jane, stand up. Jane has, Jane has been with us through numerous commissioners and changes within the Health Department and has really been just such a presence and a force. And her leadership as well has helped spearhead the direction of the Health Department through some very turbulent times that we've had in recent years. And so we say thank you to Jane, and we also have a citation for her. She didn't know that we were going to be doing this this morning, and I'm sure she's surprised. But we love you, Jane. We, you know, listen, God bless her, whatever it is that you decide to do in the future, I know that you're going to be very successful in any endeavors, even if it's just sitting down for a minute. You know, you've done an extraordinary job. And I just really wanted to read a couple of excerpts, if I could, Mr. President, from the citation. the citation. And it reads, "The Council of the City of Philadelphia is pleased and proud to honor, congratulate, and thank Jane Baker on the occasion of her retirement as Chief of Staff of the Health Department and for her many years of service to the citizens of Philadelphia. And whereas, on January 13, 2023, Jane Baker is retiring as Chief of Staff of the Health Department, and whereas Ms. Baker has served as Chief of Staff since 2014, serving as a critical promoter of public health in Philadelphia. And whereas Ms. Baker received her first appointment with the City of Philadelphia in 1996 as a public health program analyst within the Division of AIDS Activity, the AIDS Activities Coordinating Office at the Health Department. Within 13 years, she was promoted to Division Director, and under her leadership, she worked tirelessly for HIV prevention in the City of Philadelphia and HIV care and treatment in Philadelphia and the surrounding counties. Whereas Ms. Baker exhibits dedication, enthusiasm, perseverance, and loyalty, and led the efforts in many key successful projects within the City of Philadelphia. And in addition to her civil service duties as Chief of Staff, Ms. Baker was dedicated to the mission of public health. She has served as the Integrity Officer for 10 years. She holds a Master's Degree in Clinical Psychology from La Salle University, also in the Eighth District. And she has been an exemplary civil servant for over 26 years. Therefore, by virtue of this citation, the Council of the City of Philadelphia does hereby honor, congratulate, and thank Jane Baker on the occasion of her retirement from the Department of Public Health and her many years of service to the citizens of Philadelphia. We wish Ms. Baker a retirement filled with good health, happiness, and joy. God bless."
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you, Jane, for your service. We really appreciate having the opportunity to interact with you over these many years. And God bless you on your future endeavors. Thank you. That concludes the introductions and bills and resolutions. And our next, okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. I first wanted to thank my colleague, Councilmember Cindy Bass, for introducing the legislation on behalf of Jane Baker on the occasion of her retirement from the Philadelphia Department of Health. I would be remiss if I did not too congratulate Jane and say thank you for all the years that we worked together, working behind the scenes as staffers. We all know the staffers are the one who gets the job done. And I had the opportunity to work with Jane when I was a staffer for Councilmember Blondell Reynolds Brown, and we worked together on the implementation and the regs around the legislation and even through COVID and all of the tumultuous times we have faced from a public health perspective over the last several years. And so I just wanted to say thank you, Jane, for your tireless dedication to the City of Philadelphia, for always being someone that we could count on and reach out to and know that we could get a response and, you know, just have good communication between departments. So I wanted to congratulate her on the occasion of her retirement. I wish her well and hope that you enjoy every single moment. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Well, thank you, Council President. Also want to correct one, my last announcement, that the Falcons are the 2022 Youth National Champions. But nevertheless, since we're talking about transitions, I want to take a moment similar to my colleague, Councilman Jones. A little mixed emotions, but nevertheless, always happy to watch Team Johnson flourish and always go to the next level, because that's what it's all about, putting leaders all throughout city government, as well as private industry. And so, my Head of Legislative Affairs, Director of Public Policy and Legislation, Joshua Harris, will be making the transition. And I just want to publicly thank him. He has been a cornerstone of all the legislative policy that I have been doing in my City Council office, coming up with the concept of our Save Our Homes package, which we recently passed to try to help individuals stay inside their homes as we address transportation, work with me, and creating an office of victim advocate to make sure victims and co-victims with gun violence have a place to go here in city government when they are faced with significant gun violence. And most importantly, being a key advisor as we orchestrate and execute the Special Committee on Gun Violence, been there from day one with the formation, but also the various initiatives and hearings that we have held under that committee. But with that being said, I just want to take a moment and ask everybody, and everyone knows Joshua, outstanding guy, but besides his work, he's a young man of great character. And so that's what I always pay attention to regarding the people that I hire. Because you can have the best talent, I don't mean I'm gonna hire you. Look at your character and your heart and why you're actually doing this work. And so this is someone from day one, right? Good one in private industry, but saying, no, I want to serve the people here in the City of Philadelphia. So I know he has a heart, has a public servant. So I just want to acknowledge my good friend, Mr. Joshua Harris. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else? Good? Good? Hey, look, why not, right? Get it in while you can. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, Council Lady. We will now move to reports from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman O for report from the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy issues a report pursuant to Resolution Number 200175.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy, to which is heard Resolution Number 200175, entitled a resolution authorizing the City Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy, hold hearings regarding the Music Industry Task Force Report and Recommendations. Respectful reports that the committee held a hearing is authorized by Resolution Number 200175 on December 9, 2022, and that the committee has adopted and issues to the Council a final report and recommendations of the Philadelphia Music Industry Task Force on the matters discussed at the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman O. Oh, never mind, Councilman, we're good. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Now, that concludes our reports from committee. And our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. As there are no bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda for the following resolutions on final passage calendar today. Resolutions Number 220976, 220977, 220978, 220979, 220980, 220983, 220984, 220986, 220987, 220988, 220990, 220991, M220992.
Thank you. Got a second? It's been moved in second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilman Jones. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for motion concerning bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to use a consent agenda for the following bills on second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 2206668, 220814, 220913, 220915, 220917, 220919, 220921, 220938, 220118, 220639, 22075, 220844, 220870, 220871, 220890, correction, 220904, 220922, and 220907.
Thank you. It's been moved in second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Jones. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And we will, motion carries, and we'll consider the consent agenda shortly. And Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar today.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being considered on, in addition to the following bills being considered on the consent agenda today, the following resolutions and bills are being called up for second reading and final passage calendars today. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Before considering the resolutions and bills, we consider public comment. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendar for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you're not already signed up, you must do so now and go to the Sergeant of Arms in the hallway outside of the door. Once you have signed up, you will be called in order, in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. And under ideal circumstances, which we don't have today, we have a significant volume of individuals to speak. So I would ask that you please adjust your time in your speech to reflect a two-minute time limit. So please keep as best possible your testimony to two minutes today. In order to be fair, we wish, for those wishing to speak, intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. And when you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds remaining on your testimony. And when the light turns red, we ask that you please comply with the guidelines established by council and conclude your remarks. We also reserve the right pursuant to the rules of council from time to time, if the same subject matter, we can adjust the individual's testifying. I don't think we'll have that today. Mr. Decker, can you please read the first name on our list of speakers today?
The first speaker is Joseph Wheelahan, commenting on 220664.
Thank you.
Good morning.
My name is Dr. Joseph Wheelahan, and I'm a pediatrician here in Philadelphia, speaking on behalf of myself in strong support of Bill 220654, 5, and 6. In the post-Roe world, we must do everything that we can to protect access to the full spectrum of reproductive health services, including abortion. In June 2022, the American Medical Association passed policy stating that healthcare, including reproductive health services like contraception and abortion, is a human right. As a pediatrician, I know that abortion restrictions disproportionately affect adolescents and young adults. Adolescent pregnancies are more likely to be unplanned, and they have much higher rates of complications for both the mother and the infant. In addition, early childbearing limits a teenager's ability to complete schooling, which in turn affects their long-term job prospects and livelihoods. Abortion is not the right choice for all teenagers. However, because many pregnant teenagers and their families go on to raise healthy and beloved children, however, the choice should be up to the teenager, their support network, and their healthcare provider. I applaud the council on the introduction of these three bills, which seek to protect those who seek safe, evidence-based reproductive healthcare. In particular, I admire that these bills shore up existing loopholes which threaten those who obtain abortion legally. Additionally, I appreciate the inclusive language in these bills, which acknowledge that not everyone who seeks an abortion identifies as a woman. These bills make me proud to be a Philadelphian and proud to practice medicine in a city that recognizes this essential human right, and I urge their passage into law. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Michelle Gaffney.
Thank you, Ms. Gaffney. State your name for the record and please begin your testimony.
Ma'am? Sorry, I've only ever done this on the internet.
That's all right.
My first time here. Good morning, members of council. My name is Michelle Gaffney, and I'm here to voice my opposition to Bill Number 220918, the proposed Cobb's Creek overlay district. I'm a consultant and advocate for adjacent construction safety and neighbors' rights, helping residents and organizations to seek resolutions when their property is damaged by unsafe construction work. I'm also the founder of BuildLikeYouLiveHere.org, a peer advocacy movement dedicated to helping residents understand and navigate the impacts of construction harm on our neighborhoods. We also advocate for legislative protections and rights for residents of properties that have become damaged or even collapsed from adjacent construction activity, including the passage of Bill Number 220008, which goes into effect in January. With the context of how severe construction damage has become, I ask that you vote no on Bill Number 220918. This bill sets a dangerous precedent by including an exemption from the Steep Slope Protection Section of the Philadelphia Code. This exemption is an apparent attempt to allow the developer to circumvent existing safety and approval processes. The steep slope protection requirements are located in the 14-704 section of the Philadelphia Code titled Open Spaces and Natural Resources, which states its intent as, quote, "to promote safe and compatible development throughout the City of Philadelphia that avoids adverse impacts and degradation of the environment through open space preservation, protection of steep slopes, erosion control, and water quality protection." The neighborhoods surrounding this golf course restoration project are already prone to flooding. Suppose this exemption leads to more significant flooding damages to a resident's home? In that case, there are no current avenues for recourse or support through the city. And most residents cannot afford to wage a lengthy lawsuit with a developer or contractor. This scenario leaves your constituents deeply financially impacted by costly repairs, potentially losing their generational wealth investment, or even becoming displaced entirely. At the Planning Commission review of this bill on December 8th, the foundation heading up the project stated that the reason they're asking for this exemption is because they're obligated by their contract to recreate the historic layout of the Cobb's Creek Golf Course. I would recommend, instead of seeking an exemption to code requirements designed for the safety to preserve a historic golf course layout, the foundation should seek an exemption to areas of the historic layout that fall under the steep slope restriction. Do not sacrifice safety to make a replica of the past, focus on the safety and health of today's residents. Please do not pass this bill. Please, at the very least, agree with the Planning Commission's 45-day extension recommendation. The precedent that this exception will set is one we cannot afford to allow. We must not normalize safety loopholes via overlay districts. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and that bill is being held for 45 days. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah Green, commenting on 220656, 220665, and 220664.
Good morning, council members. My name is Dr. Sarah Green, and I'm a fellow with Physicians for Reproductive Health. I'm a pediatrician specializing in adolescent medicine, living and working in Philadelphia. In my practice, I care for teenagers with a variety of healthcare needs, including reproductive health and primary care. I'm strongly in favor of the bills being considered today to protect reproductive rights in our city, as I know they will benefit my patients. These include the Information Privacy Bill 220656, Employment Discrimination Bill 220664, and the Counter Suit Bill 220665. Reproductive health is more than just pregnancy prevention. I recently had a patient who was missing multiple days of high school every month because of severe pain with her periods. Birth control will improve her school attendance and help her achieve her goal of going to nursing school. When restrictions are placed on reproductive healthcare, teenagers are disproportionately at risk for losing access to care, and patients like this are vulnerable to losing these vital services. Since the overturning of Roe, I've heard many misconceptions from the young people I care for, including questioning whether condoms are illegal and whether their doctor can be sued for providing contraception. While these are myths, their fear is real, and While these are myths, their fear is real and stems from a reality that abortion is no longer a guaranteed right in this country. I'm proud to live in a city that is prioritizing reproductive health, and I urge you to pass this legislation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Amal Bass, commenting on 220-656, 220-665, and 220-664.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
My name is Amal Bass, and I'm representing the Women's Law Project. Founded in 1974 in Philadelphia, the Women's Law Project is a public interest legal organization that seeks to advance gender justice through impact litigation, public policy advocacy, community education, and individual representation. The Women's Law Project strongly supports the passage of the three reproductive rights bills. The U.S. Supreme Court's decision in Dobbs, the fact that it eviscerated our federal constitutional right to abortion by overturning precedent that had been settled law for nearly 50 years, underscores the importance of ensuring that the plain language of our laws is as clear as possible, making it harder for future courts to interpret it wrongly later. That is what the Employment Discrimination Law, Bill Number 220-664, will do. Our position at the Women's Law Project is that Philadelphia's anti-discrimination law, the Fair Practices Ordinance, already protects people from workplace discrimination on the basis of reproductive health autonomy, whether an employee is sought abortion care or contraception or fertility-related medical procedures or medicine. The law already protects these decisions because it prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex, including discrimination on the basis of pregnancy, childbirth, or a related medical condition. But again, the Dobbs decision shows us the importance of clarifying our rights in the text of the law, especially at the local and state levels. The Dobbs decision has caused chaos and confusion. Without a national floor for our right to reproductive autonomy, some states have now completely banned abortion. Those bans have forced people to travel to Philadelphia and across Pennsylvania for care they were denied in their home state. And at the same time, those anti-abortion states threaten to interfere in abortion care that is legal here. As a result, the countersuit bill, which would deter the use of other states' laws that seek to impose liability for abortion services that are legal here, is also an important piece of legislation. And it's also important during, with all of this, to protect our privacy. There is so much more we must do to protect our rights and to make abortion accessible. But these three bills are an important part of the protections we need, and we strongly support their passage. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Kelly Davis, commenting on 220-656, 220-665, and 220-664.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Davis, and I'm the Executive Director of New Voices, the only reproductive justice organization in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the first in Ohio. New Voices for Reproductive Justice is dedicated to transforming society for the holistic health and well-being of Black women, femmes, and girls, along with gender expansive people throughout Pennsylvania, Ohio, and nationally. The three bills brought forward at the Reproductive Freedom Platform combine into a comprehensive package that ensures the right to abortion access is protected through limiting the share of information, the ability to perform vigilante justice, and the ability to be discriminated against for medical decisions related to pregnancy. New Voices supports Bill 220-656 because it protects reproductive health information from being used against birthing people, makes the sharing of reproductive health information without consent a punishable offense, and it ensures certain forms of retribution are prohibited, such as sharing information online and social media. New Voices for Reproductive Justice supports Bill 220-664 because we firmly believe that Black women and birthing people must be trusted as, as moral agents with the ability to make these health, personal healthcare decisions, which includes valuing our inherent dignity and self-worth and access to bodily autonomy. This bill allows us to be trusted with our own lives, something that is increasingly paramount in a society where marginalization is rampant. It is vital to address anti-discrimination in all its forms when we live in an era where anti-abortion far-right pundits are silently going after corporations and workplaces that support their employees' medical decisions. Bill 220-664 provides additional protections to women and birthing people who may experience discrimination in the workplace due to decisions they make regarding their own bodily autonomy, which we know has implications particularly for our Black communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Jasmine Velez, commenting on Resolution 221028, a resolution introduced today and on the final passage calendar.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jasmine Velez. Good morning to you, City Council, and to everyone here. My name is Jasmine Velez, and I'm a Kensington resident in support of Resolution 221028, introduced by Councilmember Lazada. When we consider the trajectory of how fentanyl has destroyed people with its highly addictive properties and the traumatic impacts it has left and continues to leave on communities, I must ask the obvious: Are we blind to the trends of the opioid crisis? The research showcases that 44% of overdose deaths have been linked to xylazine. These pharmaceuticals are not meant for human consumption, yet it is clearly beginning to rise, whether people are conscious of it or not. We live in fear in our community of being pricked by needles when doing gardening work or when our kids are playing in the park, when we live in fear, we live in fear of the uncertainty of what may linger in those needles and how, as innocent bystanders, we may now have to worry about its impacts on our physical health, as if our mental health isn't already being tested. We can see clearly the substances, heroin, fentanyl, and now xylazine, or trank. If we have the power to remove or restrict something harmful off the streets, even if it's one damaging substance at a time, knowing it can alleviate some of the trauma, why wouldn't we try? I am here because I support this resolution, and I implore everyone to just look and see how this can be impactful for the city exacerbated by the opioid crisis. I support Councilmember Lazada's resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Lynn Landis, commenting on 210-913.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Landis, publisher of Protocols for Democracy. I support Resolution 210-913. However, today I'm speaking against the City Council's public comment policy that restricts comments to agenda items only. People make public comments in City Council meetings in order to share information and express their opinion on how the city is being governed. However, City Council's public comment policy restricts comments to agenda items only, to bills and resolutions they have approved for discussion, essentially to matters they want to discuss. This policy is not fair, equitable, or perhaps constitutional. What about the issues the people want to discuss? Certainly, the public comment period is not an opportunity for us to talk about our favorite recipes, but neither is it council's right to restrict our free speech rights as long as our comments pertain to city issues. In addition, written public comments should be published on the City Council's website. Many people cannot hear the speakers or may need to read their remarks instead. The school board provides such a service for their monthly meetings. It should also be recognized that those who make public comments are de facto citizen journalists, who provide a valuable service to both City Council and the public. In this country, we are supposed to have freedom of the, of the press. But our news media and social media platforms are overwhelmingly privately owned, where censorship is routinely practiced. Public comments provide a public remedy for this private censorship. Therefore, I respectfully request the City Council and the restrictions on public comments to agenda items only, as well as provide a link on the City Council homepage for our public comments in written form. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Mary Ebling, commenting on 220-656.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Mary Ebling, and I am a professor of sociology at Drucker University and a resident of West Philadelphia. My comments are on support of Bill 220-656, and my, and based on, which are based on my expertise on the, on the collection, use, and sale of reproductive health data by for-profit third parties outside of the healthcare sector. The council should understand how these transactions can seriously harm the most vulnerable Philadelphians, any resident capable of becoming pregnant, who may be seeking reproductive healthcare in the city. About a decade ago, I underwent assisted reproductive healthcare at one of the city's best reproductive health clinics. While all my efforts to become pregnant, pregnant and give birth through IVF failed, I experienced three miscarriages, all by week 12. I did, in fact, have a baby of sorts. A baby born from the purloined information about the fact that I was trying to get pregnant, gleaned from my phone, my credit card, my loyalty card used at pharmacies, my IP address, and other private sources that were segmented into marketing lists and sold to anyone with a few hundred dollars. Data brokers, companies that aggregate and sell personally identifiable information on almost every resident in the United States to other businesses, make these transactions without the knowledge or consent of the people that they sell the data on. It is an industry that is virtually unregulated in the U.S. Some names you may be familiar with, such as Experian or LexisNexis, which provides personal data for use in anything from criminal investigations to research and healthcare, but others you may not, such as IQVia, that provides Big Pharma with information on what doctors are prescribing to their patients, or Acxiom, that holds data on 21 million healthcare providers across the U.S. These companies collect and sell health data on millions of Americans outside of the production, protections of federal and state data privacy regulations like HIPAA. And they collect this data from things that Philadelphians do every day, like walking down the street near a Planned Parenthood, to buying, purchasing prenatal vitamins, vitamins at a local CVS, even when you purchase this with cash.
Ma'am, I think your, I think your time is up.
Thank you for my comment.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Cheryl Bedigal, commenting on Resolution 221028, introduced today and on the final passage calendar.
Good morning, Doc.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Cheryl Bedigal, the Health Commissioner for Philadelphia. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Dr. Cheryl Bedigal, Health Commissioner for Philadelphia. I first just want to thank council from the bottom of my heart for honoring Jane Baker. She has been a rock, and if anybody knows service in the, in the city of Philadelphia, it's Jane. She is always there, always answering questions, and I'm just so grateful to her. So, good morning, everyone, Council President Clark, members of City Council. Again, I'm Dr. Cheryl Bedigal, Health Commissioner for Philadelphia, here to offer testimony on Resolution, I believe it's 221028, introduced by Councilmember Lazada, on adding xylazine to the list of controlled substances in Pennsylvania. Philadelphia has been and continues to be hit particularly hard by the national crisis of opioid use, addiction, and overdose. More than 1,200 people have died from a drug overdose in Philadelphia in each of the past two years. In the past five years, we've suffered more than 5,900 fatal drug overdoses. In addition to these fatalities, every year, thousands of individuals experience non-fatal overdoses and other consequences of opioid use and addiction. I'm going to summarize quickly, because I know we're, we don't have a lot of time, but certainly the, the statistics are horrifying. The recent significant increase in polysubstance use, in which people consume multiple drugs at the same time, either knowing or unknowingly, has further exacerbated the problem. From 2011 through 2015, heroin was the most common drug found in the toxicology of overdose descendants. Yet by 2020, it was not even among the top five drugs. Fentanyl is now the leading drug, present in 979 of 12, 14 deaths, followed by cocaine, benzodiazepines, prescription opioids, and methamphetamine. Today, the non-opioid, non-stimulant drug of great public health and clinical concern is xylazine. It's commonly known as trank or trank dope. It's a sedative with analgesic and muscle-relaxing properties. It's approved for use in veterinary medicine only. The FDA has not approved it for human use. It's not a federally scheduled, scheduled drug, and it's very easy to purchase online. When it's mixed with other drugs, particularly these days, fentanyl, the risk of overdose increases. Time's up? Okay. I thank you for considering this really important resolution. Thanks to Councilmember Lazada for introducing it.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor.
The next speaker is Peter Winslow, commenting on 200533.
Morning. Good morning. My name is Peter Winslow. I'm a Philadelphia resident. I speak to you today as President of a smart collaboration, as a member of the Philadelphia Public Bank Coalition, and as a candidate recommended by City Council to Mayor Kenny for appointment to the initial board of the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority. Thank you, President Clark, and members of City Council, for this opportunity to offer public comment and support Resolution Number 200533. Councilmember Bass notes Wells Fargo's history of unethical business practices, so let's be specific. Wells Fargo systematically deceived and defrauded its Philadelphia customers by charging fees on credit cards and checking accounts open without their consent. Wells Fargo systematically violated the Fair Housing Act by targeting Black and Latinx neighborhoods for reverse redlining predatory loans. Because of this history, Councilmember Bass wants the council to ask Comcast to reconsider its agreement for naming rights to the South Philadelphia arena used as the home of the 76ers, the Flyers, and the Wings, as well as by others. I agree that responsible corporate citizens should require those they do business with to be responsible corporate citizens too. Shouldn't we at least expect a fiduciary to be trustworthy? Let's note that Wells Fargo remains among the 13 authorized suppository institutions where the city keeps its money. If the council wants to be punitive, it could rescind its authorization and cease doing business with Wells Fargo. I'm not recommending such action. I'm just saying. But the problem we face is not specific to Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo is just one of the elite, too big to fail, banks that hold our financial system hostage. In addition to individual Philadelphians, our city has been ripped off by, repeatedly, by interest rate swaps, manipulation of the LIBOR rate, rigging of the municipal bond market, and other deceptive practices. Philadelphia needs a public bank operating within our financial ecosystem to help us keep the system healthy and honest. Let me also note that a public banking advocate, Mike Kraus, died recently, so I want to leave on the public comment podium for Mr. Decker to insert into the record Mike's testimony to the council on behalf of the Public Banking Institute from October 2012, when then Councilmember Kenny chaired the hearing. Mike advocated for public banks, quote, "to guarantee the sustainable and affordable credit to individuals, businesses, and municipalities required in a modern economy to power locally-directed economic developments and job creation." Thank you very much for, for your time.
Thank you.
I wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Menel.
The next speaker is Bruce Clark, commenting on 220-916.
Bruce Clark. Left. Next speaker.
Roxanne Sutaki, commenting on 220-656, 220-665, and 220-664.
Good morning.
Thank you. My name is Roxanne Sutaki, and I serve as a patient advocate and director of community engagement with the Women's Centers, a group of independent abortion providers with centers in Georgia, Connecticut, New Jersey, and here in Pennsylvania at our Delaware County and Philadelphia Women's Centers. On behalf of the Philadelphia Women's Center, I share gratitude to Councilmembers Helen Gim, Kendra Brooks, Jamie Gautier, Cindy Bass, Catherine Gilmore Richardson, for championing, the Reproductive Freedom Platform, to defend abortion access and protect all those seeking and providing abortion care here in Philadelphia. and providing abortion care here in Philadelphia. As trusted medical providers and long-term community members, Philadelphia Women's Centers is here today to urge you to pass Bills 220656, 220665, and 220664, all critical components of the Reproductive Freedom Platform. Our Philadelphia Women's Center, or PWC, was established in 1972, and each year, we have the honor and the privilege of serving between 6,000 and 8,000 women, trans men, and gender non-conforming people seeking abortion care. I want to take a minute to recognize the compassionate and committed PWC team who are providing care across town right now. In the wake of the Dobbs decision, we are keenly aware of the threat of abortion rights being stripped away from our families and our neighbors, but we know all too well that abortion rights do not equate to access, and this is an issue of equity. Abortion care has long been pushed out of reach in Pennsylvania for our low-income neighbors, for Black birthing people, young folks, LGBTQIA+, plus individuals, people with disabilities, all our immigrant communities, and those living in rural areas of the state. Today, 14 states have no abortion providers at all, with 13 enforcing total bans on abortion care. The research tells us that denying someone abortion care has a devastating impact on their physical and mental health and economic well-being, further exacerbating existing disparities created by systemic racism and reproductive coercion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, we appreciate it.
The next speaker is Obona Higgins, commenting on 220921.
Great morning, everyone. Obona Higgins, for the record, speaking in regards to the affordable housing overlay. The government has a long history of facilitating wealth for white Americans. From the Land Act of 1785, Congress sought to transfer wealth to citizens on terms that were favorable. In 1866, the Homestead Act sought to include Afro-Americans in the transfer of public land to private farmers, but discrimination and poor implementation doomed that policy. Afro-Americans did make gains in wealth acquisition after chattel slavery ended, but the pace was slow and started from nothing. So now, you mean to tell me that a mere affordable housing program will erase the longstanding government sanctions, devaluation of Afro-American communities? What we really need is a head start Homestead Act for Afro-Americans that will transfer not just a roof over heads, but wealth. And the note, on the note of wealth and housing, prison gerrymandering, gerrymandering creates political and economic disadvantage specifically in Afro-American communities. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court ruled that prison gerrymandering violates the Free and Equal Elections Section of Pennsylvania State Constitution. The ruling in essence confirms that incarceration shifts political power from urban districts, namely North Philly, West Philly, to suburban and rural districts through legislative appointments now deemed illegal. Despite the rulings in our nation's courts citing the unconstitutionality of prison gerrymandering, there has not been a detailed accounting as the economic disenfranchisement by persons in the communities impacted. Electoral advantage was taken from districts in Philadelphia through prison gerrymandering, and the courts have ruled that residents' rights were violated. I am calling for Philadelphia City Council to convene a special committee to conduct a forensic accounting to determine how much money an incarcerated Afro-American from Philadelphia brings to foreign white districts in Royal Pennsylvania, rural Pennsylvania, and the amount of economic depreciation suffered to the, in terms of home districts in Afro-American communities.
Thank you, thank you.
Being legally gerrymandered. I further call that once the accounting is completed, the city to file an appropriate civil action to recover the stolen monies and compensate the individual families impacted.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Higgins. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Casey O'Donnell, commenting on Resolution 221028, introduced today and on the final passage calendar.
Good morning, Casey O'Donnell, from Impact Services in Kensington, speaking in support of Resolution 221028, introduced by Councilwoman Lozada. I spend every morning driving down Kensington Avenue from Castor to Lehigh, and the purpose of doing so is, one, identifying where the homeless encampments have moved to, and since it's been cold, I also have to identify where the trash fires are and call them into the fire department. As I do that, I see slumped over bodies by those campfires, hoping that they're going to wake up. And I can tell you that when you reverse an overdose, you wait for a little while after one or two doses of Narcan, and I can tell you that when someone wakes up, whatever their condition, it is heartening and incredibly relieving. There is a sigh of relief when you see somebody that's purple start breathing again. I can't tell you how heartbreaking it is to see someone not wake up after four doses of Narcan because their body is full of Xylazine. Whatever we can do to address this issue, we need to do. Do I think adding it to a list is really going to change anything? Frankly, I don't, but we need to take every step possible, and this legislative body also needs to figure out how to get people off the streets and into safe housing where they can be cared for. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your testimony, I appreciate it.
The next speaker is Issya Shaheed, commenting on 220976.
Good morning. My name is Issa Shaheed, represent of Labor District Council of Philadelphia and Vicinity. I'm here to speak on Bill 22, 220976. Time for prayer. I would like to begin by thanking the council for introducing this bill, this home repair. I think it's a, it's an opportunity for a lot of homeowners to really invest in their home, their safe haven, and opportunity to pull impoverished people out of poverty by investing in their homes and the mass exodus of people that are leaving Philadelphia, going to different areas due to violence and things like that. But we also have an opportunity to change the trajectory of some of our youth by investing a lot of these funds that come to the state into apprenticeships, teaching youth trades, life skills, and how to further their lives with a middle-class profession. So, we would like to, we are in support of the bill, but we would like to have more conversations on how that, those funds could be accepted and applied to pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony.
The next speaker is Louis Williams, commenting on 220976.
Morning. Good morning, the council and everyone here, thank you. My name is Louis Williams. I'm the founder and CEO of a nonprofit, it's called New by Lou, and what we do is designing and painting and making places livable for the low income. Also, I'm a board member of the RCO, and also I have an online newspaper, The Daily Prism, that is made for people to, a means for them to express themselves. But I'm here this morning to represent the low income and talk about the housing that's being built up on North Broad Street. If you remember, for some of you, we just had an incident on 40th and Market, whereas the townhouses was destroyed. Developers came in, they built those houses about 40 years ago, and then all of a sudden they want to sell the houses to another developer, and, and those people in the townhouses had to move out. So it seems to me, this is the same thing that's being, about to be done on North Broad Street. And what I'm saying, housing is fine, but we need to sustain these people, you just can't let developers come in and make all their money, they get tax breaks, they build these cheap houses, the government pays them for them, they let people live in them. And Broad Street is an up-and-coming area, so it's only a matter of time before those houses is going to be torn down. So now, what's going to happen to those people? I'm saying that we need to create some type of way that these people can own these properties, create businesses where they can develop and be taught how to maintain them, and this way is not, we're not just continually doing the same thing over and over. And I want to thank council for allowing me to speak for the low income, but I just think it's a good idea for these homes, but I think we really need to expand a little bit more on them as far as so that people can be able to maintain them and live there for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker, and thank all of you for your testimony today, we really appreciate it. And we will now consider today's Resolution Consent Agenda. I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, can you please read the titles of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda?
Resolution Number 220976, entitled a resolution approving the Philadelphia Housing Development Corporation as the city's applicant to receive funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development under the Whole Home Program. And Resolution Number 220977, entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title 23548 Germantown Avenue in the 5th Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220978, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to various properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District, including on the following streets, Clifford Street, Cecil B. Moore Avenue, North Aryan Street, Moore Street, North Eighth Street, North Ninth Street, North Tenth Street, and North Thirty-first Street. And Resolution Number 220979, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to various properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District, including on the following streets, North Myrtlewood Street, North Thirty-eighth Street, North Marston Street, North Bailey Street, and Cecil B. Moore Avenue. And Resolution Number 220980, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to various properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District, including on the following streets, North Seventh Street, North Eighth Street, North Ninth Street, North Tenth Street, North Thirteenth Street, North Thirty-first Street, North Thirty-second Street, North Thirty-third Street, North Franklin Street, Mellon Street, East Norah Street, West York, West York Street, West Arizona Street, North Comack Street, Parrish Street, North Perth Street, and Turner Street. And Resolution Number 220983, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to 1308 South Hollywood Street, 1310 South Hollywood Street, and 1312 South Hollywood Street located in the 2nd Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220984, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3418, 3420, and 3422 Kensington Avenue located in the 7th Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220986, entitled a resolution renaming the 5500 block of Christian Street Gene Let Way to honor the life and work of activist and community leader Eugene Jean Let Senior. And Resolution Number 220987, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1834, 1837, 1840, 1846, and 1848 South Allison Street, 557 Pascal Avenue, and 5804 Hazel Avenue located in the 3rd Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220988, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 239 North Paxton Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220990, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2544 South Fifth Street and 1921 South Sixth Street located in the 1st Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220991, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to 2868 Amber Street, 2118 East Monmouth Street, and 2132 East Monmouth Street located in the 1st Councilmanic District. And Resolution Number 220992, entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to various properties located in the 1st Councilmanic District, including on the following streets, South Fourth Street, South Sixth Street, Aggett Street, Blair Street, Cantrell Street, East Clearfield, Clearfield Street, Frankfurt Avenue, Kensington Avenue, Mercy Street, Tree Street, East Westmoreland Street, Winton Street, and Wolf Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
Thank you, it has been moved to second, that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider today's bill consent agenda. I would ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the bill will immediately be removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular passes found in calendar today. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the bills on the bill consent agenda today.
Bill Number 220666A, entitled in ordinance cementing Chapter 93300 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Use of Inspection and Tower and Mobile Cranes in Construction to Require Brakes for Operators. And Bill Number 220814, entitled in ordinance cementing Section 12919 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled On-Street Parking of Boats, Motorhomes, Truck Campers, Semi-Trailers, Truck Tractors, and Vending Cars, to provide prohibitions on semi-trailer and truck tractor parking in the 10th District of Council. And Bill Number 220913, entitled in ordinance cementing Section 14504 Subparagraph 11 of the Philadelphia Code entitled NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, Strawberry Mansion. And Bill Number 220915, entitled in ordinance cementing Chapter 14400 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Base Zoning Districts and Chapter 14600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Use Regulations by Revising Provisions Related to Utilities and Services and Water Treatment Facilities. And Bill Number 220917, entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by City Avenue, Stout Road, Monument Road, and Belmont Avenue, and to authorize basic utilities and services in a section of Fairmont Park. And Bill Number 220919, entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designation of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Henry Avenue, Roosevelt Boulevard Extension, Scotts Lane, and Indian Queen Lane. And Bill Number 220921, entitled in ordinance cementing Chapter 14500 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by Amending Section 14534, entitled AHP, Affordable Housing Preservation Overlay District, and by making related changes. And Bill Number 220938, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Director of Commerce and Director of Finance to enter into amendments to multi-year agreements with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, formerly known as the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Philadelphia, and other parties as necessary concerning the parking garage constructed as part of the overall Market Street East Gallery II redevelopment project, including an additional amendment to the agreement between the city and PAID as amended originally authorized by Bill Number 546, approved June 15, 1993, and further authorizing the Director of Commerce and Director of Finance where necessary or prudent to enter into ancillary agreements with any or all of PAID PRA, Parametric Garage Associates, and new lender to Parametric and other parties. And Bill Number 220118, entitled in ordinance authorizing encroachment upon East Passian Avenue and Moore Street in the vicinity of 1801 East Passian Avenue. And Bill Number 220639, entitled in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 27S by striking from the City Plan the easterly 20-feet-wide portion of Swanson Street from Wolf Street to Snyder Avenue, striking from the City Plan vacating the legally open portion of Vandalia Street from Wolf Street to Wicco Go Avenue, and reserving and placing on the City Plan a right of way for sewer and drainage purposes. And Bill Number 220775, entitled in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 291 by striking from the City Plan vacating the legally open portion of Schelmeyer Avenue from State Road to the center line of the Philadelphia and Trenton Railroad. And Bill Number 220844, entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Haverford Avenue between North 67th Street and North 68th Street. And Bill Number 220870, entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Malvern Avenue between 63rd Street and Wynwood Road. And Bill Number 220871, entitled in ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, and maintenance of various encroachments in the vicinity of 435 North Broad Street. And Bill Number 220904, entitled in ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, replacement, and maintenance of various encroachments in the vicinity of 1700 through 1720 Arch Street. And Bill Number 220922, entitled in ordinance amending Section 12919 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled On-Street Parking of Code entitled on-street parking of boats, motorhomes, truck campers, semi-trailers, truck tractors, and vending carts to provide prohibitions on semi-trailer and truck tractor parking in the 6th District of Council. And bill number 220907 entitled an ordinance naming and designating the Mill Creek Recreation Center located at 4700 Brown Street as the Tiffany Fletcher Recreation Center, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills have been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Clerk will call the roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye or nay on those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker?
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. Majority of all members haven't voted in affirmative for each of the bills. The bills on the consent agenda have passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 220322AAA.
An ordinance amending chapter 16400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled surplus properties by adding criteria for evaluating non-competitive dispositions.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and last.
Um, here we go. Your name is up. You press your button?
No.
Okay. I see, I see Owen. Okay. Councilman O, you didn't want it either, right? All right. People getting a head start on, were we getting a head start on speeches? No, not here yet. All right. I see you, Councilwoman. I just saw a couple of other members. The head start thing going on. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
A few words about the bill. The Public Land for Public Benefit Bill will create a pathway in the 3rd and 4th districts for community-controlled green spaces and permanently affordable housing on city-owned land. We've all been witness to the benefits that community green spaces have provided for our communities, and we've seen the devastation when these spaces are snatched away and shared cells, often destroying gardens and side lots that have been lovingly maintained by neighbors for years. And given the state of our local affordability crisis, the city's thousands of vacant parcels offer a unique and important opportunity to secure land uses that our communities need and can benefit from the most. Community ownership models like community land trust result in equitable development because the community sets the rules for how the land is used and ensures any future development continues to benefit residents. Their decision-making structure ensures that a community-run board retains ownership of the land, which gives the community a direct stake in the future of their neighborhoods. This bill will give residents of changing neighborhoods more of a chance to be considered, to have more of an ownership stake in publicly-owned property, and provide them with the time and space in fast-paced markets for community members to fully develop projects that will be beneficial to them and their neighbors. I'd like to thank the legislation's cosponsors. Their input very much helped improve the bill. I'd also like to thank the administration for their collaboration, and I'd like to give the most gratitude to the Philadelphia Coalition for Affordable Communities, or PCAT, for their fierce advocacy for this legislation, and for their efforts to champion housing justice in our city. This wouldn't have been possible without them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O. Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of all members present haven't voted in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 220656A.
An ordinance adding a new chapter 61400 to the Philadelphia Code entitled privacy of certain health information to establish privacy protections for information related to reproductive health care.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O. Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. Councilman, did you need to be recognized? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wanted to be. I'm sorry. I wanted to be recognized before the calling of the bills. I just wanted to state that while I appreciate the hard work, and I was on the committee and voted to pass these three bills out of committee, but at the time, I raised the issue that I don't think at least two of them, that we have a jurisdiction or authority as a city council. I know there are a lot of national issues that we'd like to have under our control, but I believe this is a federal issue, and I believe the other is a state and federal issue. I do believe, however, that the third bill, 664, is a matter that city council does have authority, and I will support that, but the other two, I believe we don't have the authority to pass on those topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Ayes are 15 and ayes are 1. Majority of all members present voting affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 220665A.
An ordinance amending title 6 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code to establish legal protections related to entities or individuals seeking, providing, or assisting others to obtain reproductive services.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 15 and ayes are 1. Majority of all members present voting affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 220923A.
An ordinance amending titles 9 and 10 of the Philadelphia Code to establish procedures and requirements to prevent the theft of motor vehicles and parts, including catalytic converters and other precious metal car parts, and to impose penalties for non-compliance.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of all members present voting affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 220664.
An ordinance amending chapter 91100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination to protect against discrimination related to reproductive health, modify and harmonize related provisions of the chapter, and make other related technical changes.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 220846.
An ordinance approving the plan, estimated costs, and proposed method of assessment and charges of the Center City District for and concerning business improvements and administrative services to the Central Business District of the City of Philadelphia for 2023 through 2027, amending an ordinance, bill number 1069, approved November 2, 1990, as amended by bill number 960631, approved November 25, 1996, and further amended by bill number 120800, approved December 21, 2012, and as further amended by bill number 170927, approved December 2017, adopted pursuant to the Municipality Authorities Act of 1945, and approving estimated costs for debt service through 2045.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. Was there one note? Were they all aye? The ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of all members present voting affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring Kiyasha Tyson and recognizing her for her tireless service to the people of Philadelphia and Pennsylvania introduced today by Councilman Phillips.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Councilman Phillips, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating champion of the week, St. Joseph's Preparatory High School Football Team for their success in winning the PIA double A six A title in Harrisburg, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution amending resolution number 200001A as amended, which provides rules for the government of the Council of the City of Philadelphia by establishing a new standing committee titled the Committee on Neighborhood Services, introduced today by Councilman Jones on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
On your behalf, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation to hold public hearings to discuss the status of the city's recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, introduced today by Councilman Jones on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Again, on your behalf, Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the historic and trailblazing leaders of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives and the Philadelphia House delegation, Joanna McClinton, Jordan Harris, Morgan Seifus, Danilo Burgos, and Malcolm Kenyatta, introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Yes, briefly, I just want to recognize that Philadelphia is well-served by these group of young, and I'll say young, leaders that are taking leadership roles in spite of court cases and challenges to lead Philadelphia and Pennsylvania into a future. So with that, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing African Town, a broad-based economic development initiative in southwest and west Philadelphia led by the African Cultural Alliance of North America, introduced today by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Before I move for the adoption of the resolution, I also want to acknowledge my colleague from West Philadelphia, Councilman Jamie Gauthier. We're working in partnership with the creation of African Town, which covers the parts of on lower southwest Philadelphia and upper southwest Philadelphia. We think it will not only be an economic boom to the region, but also a cultural boom to the region. And so I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring City Year Philadelphia for its 25 years of service in Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, again, Council President, before I move for the adoption of the resolution, I just want to briefly state the great work that City of Philadelphia has been doing here in this city for 25 years. It's a program that I joined. Immediately, I'm out of college at that particular time. Bill Clinton was the president, and the issue of public service and national service was key on the agenda, not only here in the City of Philadelphia, but all throughout the country. And so I used to do PT, which is physical training across the street with my red jacket on and my Timberland boots, but also while I served as a project manager and city year, is there that I learned my leadership skills in terms of managing individuals, but most importantly, taking on products that may seem impossible, but working with a group and a team to make sure that whatever we're trying to accomplish becomes possible. And so with that being said, I do great work with youth inside the Philadelphia School District and want to take this moment to honor them for their 25 years of service. So with that being said, I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution, Council President.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying titled of 3418 Kensington Avenue, 3420 Kensington Avenue, and 3422 Kensington Avenue located in the 7th Councilmanic District, Avenue located in the Seventh Councilmanic District, introduced today by Councilwoman Lozada.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lozada.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution, Philadelphia City Council calls on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to add Xylazine to the Controlled Substances List in Pennsylvania, introduced today by Councilwoman Lozada.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Lozada.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution designating Wednesday, December twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two as National Homeless Person's Memorial Day in the City of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Gauthier.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to conduct hearings regarding discrimination against households holding tenant-based vouchers, putting thousands of vulnerable Philadelphians at risk of homelessness and the effect of this discrimination on Philadelphia's affordable housing crisis, introduced today by Councilwoman Gauthier.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring Samantha J. Williams Esquire, recognizing her service to the citizens of Philadelphia, and wishing her well in her future endeavors, introduced today by Councilwoman Gauthier and Councilman Curtis Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Council President. Even though it is bittersweet, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on retention and recruitment of municipal workers to analyze and recommend ways to modernize the city's hiring procedures, recommend strategies to retain current city workers, and recruit new workers by, to the greatest extent possible, hiring city residents, introduced today by Councilman O'Neil on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
As I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the month of December as National Right of Business Plan Month in the City of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the month of December as National Impair Driving Prevention Month in the City of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution proclaiming January thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, as Korean-American Day in Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Korean-Americans and their invaluable contributions to enhance the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy, introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. Move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, that completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. This is the last day of the council meetings for this term. We will be going into what's called winter break, as they call summer break. I'd just like everyone to know in the public that we're not actually on break. We don't go on vacation. We're still in our offices. We still work. We don't meet here, but we are available. You can call if you can reach us. And during this time, I'd like to say that I have several events that I'd like to invite the public to. The first this Saturday is going to be our Holiday Fun Day and Toy Giveaway. Unfortunately, because of the violence in our city, we really focused on children whose parents and family members were taken from them. And so this is a free event. I'd like to thank the persons providing, the entities providing the actual toys, Walmart, Five Below, and others, Temple University providing the location. It is this Saturday at the Student Pavilion, which is actually like an indoor football field, so the kids will have a nice soft surface, plenty of room. There'll be moon bounce, food, snacks, and at the end of it, they will leave with toys. So that's one to four, Fifteenth Street between Burks and Norris. Please register at Eventbrite Holiday Fun Day Toy Giveaway, and that will assure that you have space and room at the event. The next one is the end of our PHL Live Center Stage. We've gone through ten genres of music, ten concerts, and we will be presenting our awards. But fortunately, this year, the award show is free, so everybody's welcome to come. We are featuring Lauren Talisse and Marcus Bryant, who is rated art, and we'll have another band. That's going to be at World Cafe Live at thirty twenty-five Walnut Street on December the twentieth, Tuesday, December the twentieth. Doors open at seven-thirty. Show starts at eight P.M. Then, as we have often talked about, I don't have any money, and neither does any of the at-large council people. So what I started to do was put together a time for folks to come by who needed money, and it is our two thousand twenty-three Youth Nonprofit Symposium where it's all about getting money, getting funds. If you're a nonprofit that serves children and youth, come on by. It's free. It's on January the tenth, starting at eight A.M. to one P.M. at Temple University. Our keynote speaker is Jay Coloda, Wawa Foundation President. We'll have about fifteen or seventeen foundations and corporations that will talk to you about funding your organization. We have breakout sessions. You can talk to them and meet up to three foundations or corporations, funders, on a small group basis. And finally, as we talked about, the Korean-American Day, this is actually our tenth anniversary. The event's always been free, but we're doing something a little different. We're going to go have a dinner, a gala, so that's not going to be free, unfortunately. It is seventy-five dollars a ticket, but it will be a great celebration if anyone would like to go. We'll celebrate on that day, January the thirteenth. I didn't set that date. That was set by Congress because Koreans took a boat or something over to Hawaii. So for us, it's super chilly, and so it's, you know, we do the flag raising, and we'll have this event. And those are just some events that we'll be doing over the winter break, and I'm sure my colleagues will have more. But anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to shout that out. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I want to say a few words about the Reproductive Freedom Platform. I first want to thank Councilmembers Gauthier and former Councilmember Gem for doing this, for their strong leadership on this issue. When we first heard the news of the lead majority draft opinion, we were in the streets together. We marched hand in hand with diverse, broad movement of people who wanted a future that was not characterized by shame and stigma and hatred, but with freedom, the freedom to define our own paths and control over our bodies, your family, and your future. And together, Councilmember Gem, Gauthier, and myself decided that we couldn't stand by and just wait for others to determine our fate. We would do everything in our power to protect our constituents and everyone who chooses to travel to our city. So we joined together with leading reproductive health advocates and legal experts to figure out what must be done to protect providers, patients, and anyone seeking reproductive care in Philadelphia, because we knew that while abortion is and was still legal in Philadelphia, it didn't mean that it wasn't under threat. And I'm incredibly proud of the work that we did arrive to at this legislation. We want to give special thanks out to the Women's Law Project, so many folks from New Voices, ACL U.P.A., Planned Parenthood, Penn Med, and Penn Professors for shaping it and supporting it through the committee hearing and final passage today. This precedent-setting legislation ensures that no matter who you are, where you work, and where you work or your reproductive health decisions can't be used against you. And even though this council body has experienced a great deal of change recently, I'm proud that Council President has enabled the members to continue to pass meaningful legislation in supporting our incumbent council members in adapting to this city council body, and we will still be doing the people's work, because this legislation is something we can't wait, we couldn't wait for. This legislation shows that we are responsive to the needs of our residents and that whatever our rights are under attack, we won't remain silent, and we will stand up and fight back. So I'm grateful to have strong, powerful women on this council who are such strong advocates for protecting the basic rights and freedoms. And I especially want to thank council members Cindy Bass and Catherine Gilmore Richardson for their support as well. Thank you, council colleagues, and thank you, Council President, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
President, since the beginning of my time in office, the preservation of affordable housing has been high on my list of priorities. That is why today I introduce the People's Preservation Package. In a city that already lacks sufficient affordable housing for its residents, we must do everything we can to prevent this crisis from getting any worse. This package will give the city and its affordable housing partners the tools to maintain as many existing affordable units as possible. By compiling an official directory of properties with affordability subsidies and their terms, we will have a unified way of keeping track of when affordability at a particular property is at risk and provide a longer runway to create solutions that preserve affordability. Requiring property owners who intend to sell their affordable properties to notify affordable housing providers of their intent to sell will allow time for potential fundraising efforts to buy and maintain the properties as affordable. In addition to preserving existing affordable units, we must also take a hard look at the discriminatory practices that have kept Philadelphians with housing vouchers from competing on the private market. Even though source of income discrimination is illegal in Philadelphia, for years landlords have been denying units to households with vouchers, and we need to examine how this discrimination is exacerbating an already critical housing situation in our city. This legislative package is just the first of many steps we can take to preserve affordable housing and provide safe, stable housing for all Philadelphians. I'd like to thank the co-sponsors of the legislation and look forward to working with my colleagues to create innovative ways to preserve and create affordability in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Harity.
Hello, Council President. It's been seventeen days since myself and my new colleagues were sworn in to be members of this body, and I wanted to reiterate the appreciation of both me and my staff to both you and to each member of this chamber who has taken the time to help us become accustomed to the norms of city council. I'd like to extend my additional appreciation to the council tech staff for being approachable and welcoming, which, and I think I can speak for all of us when I say, made us feel like a full-fledged member. With the spirit of camaraderie, I look forward to working with all of you in the new year. And in the holiday spirit, it was the other day that I was sitting down to write letters to Santa Claus with my grandchildren, and as I was writing them, I thought for a long time about what I wanted for Christmas. I was, it was then I realized that Santa couldn't leave the presents I wanted under the tree. So instead, I wrote a letter to the only person who could, and if this body would indulge me, I'd like to read it now. Dear Mr. Mayor, while you enjoy the holidays, I'd like to ask that you keep me and my neighbors on the seven-hundred block of East Willard Street in mind. Nowhere else in the city would they want what's going on in my neighborhood, and no one should have to tolerate what they have been tolerating for so long. Kensington has been ground zero of the opioid epidemic in our city, and image so bad that the Mexican government is using video of the unhoused and addicted population in my neighborhood and state-sponsored anti-drug advertisement. This is only an embarrassment to that neighborhood, but an embarrassment to our entire city. We have become the flattened girl in Mexico's Just Say No campaign. It's no longer, this is your brain on drugs, but this is your city on drugs. The residents of Kensington are being asked to deal with so much, and is an example of what the rest of the city is now dealing with. Senior citizens are living like prisoners in their own homes. They are afraid to leave for fear of being victims of crime or witnesses of the zombie-like state of those addicted to heroin laced with fentanyl. Those who have to leave their homes, the children, who have to walk to and from school, have to walk through open-air drug markets and witness their peers peddling poison to make profit. We need help. We need you to step up. We need you to say enough is enough. We need you, Mr. Mayor, to do what the people elected you to do, what you swore in oath to do, protect Philadelphians, all Philadelphians, regardless of where they reside in the city, regardless of what they need to protect them from, to paraphrase Edwin Burke, "The only thing necessary for evil to triumph in the world is for good men and women to do nothing." As we are all aware of in this body, there is much work to be done in the new year. We all know the plight of gun violence in our respective districts and in the entirety of our city. We all know the problems of the understaffed first responders, including our paramedics and police officers. We all know about the significant problems faced by parents and children to cope with the decrepit school buildings and school closures. And while our country faces a potential resurgence in the COVID-19 pandemic, our city's still grappling with the fallout of the opioid epidemic, the symptoms of which trickle down to every facet of this city's life, from the increase in homeless population to drug trade-related shootings and the demoralized workforce, whose job it is to respond to these alarms. However, despite challenges that we face as a body, I am delighted to be working with some of the most intelligent, caring, and most importantly, kind people in our city who truly wish to achieve good for all, for our fellow Philadelphians, while I know some of us may have competing answers to many of these problems that I have pointed out today and that we try to address every Thursday. I'm excited to continue to work for all of Philadelphia. And Council President, as you can see, I'm dressed in all black today, and that's because I'm mourning our city. I'm mourning all the victims of gun violence. Enough's enough. Somebody has to do something about it. I'm asking Mr. Mayor to please help me and my community, as well as the rest of City Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, it means so much to me that you all have co-sponsored Resolution two-two-zero-nine-eight-four. Philadelphia has a perception of lawlessness. I'm here to talk reality. We have more than six thousand police officers and countless professionals who fight every day to keep Philadelphians safe. They could earn more money elsewhere, but they are here because of their dedication, sacrificing themselves under intense public and political pressure because of how much they care. So we know Philadelphia is not a lawless place. However, perception becomes reality. This is especially true in Kensington, where residents have dealt with poverty, language access issues, the drug epidemic, and the gun violence crisis for years. These are the same conditions many of our ancestors fled to come here, and this deep intergenerational harm must come to an end. People feel there is no end in sight. We have seen what does not work. It's time to fix it. When Kensington thrives, this whole city thrives. This great city was built on countless programs to help the people who are suffering so they can heal and live with dignity. The billion-dollar drug market, the billion-dollar drug market continues to find new ways to stop that progress without enforcement. We always Without enforcement, all we can do is encourage treatment and pray that people don't slowly kill themselves while their families wonder where they are. This resolution is my first concrete step toward helping Kensington return to a vibrant community, where parents can walk their children to school without stepping on needles and where everyone can be safe and thrive. Thank you all, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Real quick, I just want to remind the members of the Education Committee, as well as the listening public, that tomorrow we're having an important hearing around Act 158. If people don't know, the state guidelines as it relates to what a high school student has to complete in order to graduate from high school has changed. And tomorrow, we're going to examine where we are as a municipality as it relates to our young people graduating from high school in June and what steps we need to take there. Hearing is going to be virtual. It's going to be tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 P.M. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I too want to echo Councilmember Harity for all that he said about the work that we need to do to curb gun violence, among other things. But also, I want to thank all of you for welcoming councilmembers, you know, our colleagues, Councilmember Sharon Vaughn, and Councilwoman Lazada, and Harity, and myself. You all have been extremely welcoming, helpful over the past few weeks as we become more acclimated to this work and the service that we're going to do to Philadelphia. I just want to quickly say that when St. Joe's Preparatory Schools victory came across my desk as Councilmember Thomas presented this resolution to honor them, I've been running around the city serving for a little while now, and it shocked me. As a student, as a graduate of LaSalle College High School, I must say that I want to say, you know, congratulations to those young men, but, you know, Councilman O'Neill or LaSalle guys are going to come back next year strong, I'm sure. All right? But I want to also just add that my colleague, Councilwoman Cindy Bass, has, you know, did her legislative team in particular, did a phenomenal job with putting together a piece of legislation that's really important for all of us in the city of Philadelphia, and that's around catalytic converters. So I just wanted to acknowledge the Councilwoman for pushing that legislation, because no matter what room many of us enter throughout our districts and, you know, folks at council at large, we hear about this issue, and I really hope this is a first step to curtailing this issue in the city of Philadelphia. And I already started talking about it in the district, and hopefully that this will, you know, create waves to really prevent this from happening to many of the citizens in Philadelphia. So thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Vaughn.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is afternoon now. I am moved by my colleague's speech also to the mayor, but I'm more concerned, and I'm working with my team diligently, to see what I can do opposed to what the mayor is going to do. I believe it's important to this body that we all get together and start making moves in this city in order to make a difference. I want to wish everyone a happy holiday. I also want to thank the 42nd Ward and relentless, a nonprofit in my ward. We had a fish fry this past weekend and raised money to do a toy giveaway, and I'm inviting anyone that wants to attend. It's going to be on November the 20th, December the 23rd, at the Feltonville Recreation Center from 1:30 until we give away the toys. We have also been blessed with a STEM program from SNipes at this recreation center, and the unveiling will be prior to. So any child that wants to come in and utilize the computers and things like that, that we will have available to them, and we also will be serving them a nice holiday dinner. So I would like for people to try to come, and this is definitely a free event for anyone that wants to join us at the Feltonville Recreation Center on Wyoming Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Let me be real brief, Council President. I just want to also commend Councilwoman Cindy Bass. And I was going to say it when the bill was brought up, but that Cadillac converter bill is major, and hopefully it goes toward just totally eliminating this practice. It reminds me of, like, growing up in the crack era, and they would, like, steal any and everything, right? You might come out the house, and your car might be on crates, right? And so hopefully the people that's doing all the stealing get the help that they need. But anytime you see a story where an educational institution, daycare center, gets up in the morning, and the drivers go out to start their school buses to pick up their kids and can't go out and pick up the kids because the Cadillac converters are stolen, is totally unacceptable. And so when we talk about the issue of public safety, this falls in line with making sure that we're enforcing all the laws on the book to those who are accountable that are destroying the quality of life here in the city of Philadelphia. So Councilwoman Cindy Bass, thank you for putting forward that legislation, because at the end of the day, you know, I'm never going to be shy about people in the city being hard-working Philadelphians, and shouldn't have to wake up and come outside and get in their car, and their car is damaged because someone decided to come and steal from them. And especially being the number one big city when it comes to poverty, you know, your coins are valuable.
Yes.
So, you know, you're destroying somebody else's quality of life, and they can't just get up the next day and go get their car fixed, it could be a problem. And so, and insurance companies will take advantage of them as well. So thank you, Councilwoman Cindy Bass, for stepping up to that quality of life piece of legislation.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we end 2022, we thank God for small favors, on the fact that we didn't exceed so far last year's murder rate and that we're doing substantive work in this chamber and in this city to address gun violence. But I want to shout you out, Mr. President. We had a lot of publicity last week on different topics, but one of the things that went under the radar was your trip to Camden. You took members of this body, Member Thomas, Member Gilmore Richardson, over to Camden, where we toured ShotSpotter, looked at their configuration of cameras, looked at how they integrated the technology with some good old-fashioned community policing, that they know the people in the area, that they use the technology not only to hold those who would do people harm accountable, but to the members of their police force accountable as to where they were, how long they were there. But the one thing that we picked up from Trenton, or Camden, or wherever we've gone, Chester, was cooperation, was the fact that these individuals, stakeholders, could sit in a room and figure it out. I appreciate the new members of this body for some of the things that they've proposed today. I appreciate Member Harity's letter to the mayor. But what I also know is that if we're going to do better in 2023, we have to do better working with each other. And that means that we all can't point the finger at each other, we have to point the finger towards solutions, because our people depend on us to do so. So thank you, Mr. President, for being, as Blondie Reynolds would say, laserly focused on the issue. I am moving us in the right direction. And I want to say, if I don't see you during the course of the holidays, have a happy holiday and a prosperous, safe new year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
And Ramadan. That's 100 days from now.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. On the occasion of our last council session for 2022, I wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you, Council President. Thank you to all of my colleagues, to all of our team members, particularly your staff, Council President. We appreciate each and every one of you for all you do to help us do the work that we do on behalf of the constituents of the city of Philadelphia. I also wanted to pause and say thank you to the men and women of the Philadelphia Fire Department. Maya Angelou says, always say thank you, because it's the greatest gift you can give someone, because thank you is what you say to God. And so I wanted to say thank you so much to the men and women of the Philadelphia Fire Department, particularly Engine 54, and all of the first responders who are our heroes in the Winfield community for their work this week, earlier this week. The house next door to me caught fire. I live in a row home, and the efforts of the men and women of the Philadelphia Fire Department certainly made the difference. We all were able to make it out safely. My neighbors are safe, and we had very minimal damage. And so I wanted to say thank you so much, particularly to firefighter Davis, who came in after the fire. We were cleared to re-enter our home and made sure we had, you know, our smoke detectors in the right spaces and places, and even moved our carbon monoxide detector to the right space, because we have a boiler in the basement. So I just wanted to say thank you so very much from the bottom of our hearts, from all the neighbors in Winfield for your work. And finally, I wanted to remind everyone about a program we'll be having next week, particularly in light of the loss of Twitch. I know so many of you have probably heard about the DJ from The Ellen Show, and I was really struck by his loss. And every year since I've been in council, we've had a program around managing grief and loss during the holidays. And I know it's a very tough season for so many of us who have lost so many. And so that program will be Thursday, December 22nd, 12:30 to 1:00 P.M. It will be livestream online, and you can get more information at Councilmember KGR on Instagram, Facebook, or Twitter. Thank you, Council President, and happy holidays to each and every one of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilwoman. For our call for a motion to adjourn, just want to thank all of you all. Another successful year, but as witness, this conversation that we've just had on speeches, there's a whole lot of work to do, you know? So we don't have the luxury of resting on our laurels and patting ourselves on the back. We got to keep pushing, keep moving the needle, continue to do what we need to do. Councilman Johnson, I know what it's like to look out the window and see your car on cinder blocks, okay? Firsthand, right? Call Councilman Jones, I can't make the meeting, I'm on cinder blocks. So there are some challenges out here, but, you know, we have to figure out a way. Like, Councilman Jones said that all of the trips from Camden to Baltimore to Chester, it was all about collaboration, and it was clear that that was the one single formula that was consistent across the board. So we will have to work together. We will have to check our egos at the doors. We work for the citizens of the city of Philadelphia. When somebody says, in the street, I'll pay your salary, they actually do, you know? So we got to recognize that, and we got to figure out a way to make sure that we do whatever we need to do. So with that, I just want to say you all have an awesome holiday season. Enjoy it for a couple of days, because it's time to go back to work shortly thereafter. And I want to say how much I appreciate you all, you know? I'm going to say this again, I know I'm not soft, some people. I love you guys, right? Somebody say, man, you're getting soft, Darrell. But I do, right? So as my council family, I just want to say you all be safe, have, enjoy your session, enjoy your holiday. Love you guys. With that, call for a motion to adjourn. And Councilman Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council stand adjourned until Thursday, January 19th, 2023, at 10:00 A.M.
Thank you. It's been moved a second to council stand adjourned until Thursday, January 19th, 2023, 10:00 A.M. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, motion carried. Thank you all very much.